I will call a regular meeting of the Board of Alderman to order at 7:30. The prayer will be offered by City Clerk Patricia Piatz, and Alderman Dowd will lead us in the pledge to the flag.
Almighty God, we have the high honor and serious duty to manage the affairs of our beloved city. Philosope God with the spirit of unity and understanding, which enables us to face our multiple problems with a serene mind, with justice and charity for all, so that any and all decisions made by us will always be for the betterment and greater happiness of all our fellow citizens, so help us, God.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would the clerk please call a roll?
Alderman Willshire.
Here.
Alderman Clemmons.
Here.
Alderman Cookson.
Present.
Alderman Karen.
Here.
Alderman Siegel.
Present.
Alderman Shoneman.
Here.
Alderwoman Lizzie Gola.
Present.
Alderman McGinnis.
Here.
Alderman LeBrun.
Here.
Alderman Moriarty.
Here.
Alderman O'Brien.
Present.
Alderman Lopez.
Here.
Alderman McCarthy.
Present.
We have thirteen members present.
Also present is Honor Mayor James Donches and Corporation Council Stephen Bolton. Does the whip mayor wish to address the board?
Yes, Mr. President, I have several items this evening. First, tonight on your desks, you will find a red ribbon in honor of Red Ribbon Week. On Monday, we officially recognized October 23rd to the 31st as Red Ribbon Week in Nashua, along with members of the Nashua Prevention Coalition. Red Ribbon Week is the largest prevention awareness campaign observed annually in the United States, bringing millions together to advocate for drug and violence prevention, early intervention, and treatment services. This year's theme is "Your Future is Key, So Stay Drug-Free." The Red Ribbon Week campaign is an opportunity to bring people together throughout Nashua and unify them in the cause of ending drug addiction and violence in our city. On Saturday, October 28th, this coming Saturday, from 10:00 to 2:00, the Prevention Coalition will be hosting a Drug Disposal Day at the DPW Garage, where residents can dispose of unwanted prescriptions. Next, Mr. President, the Saturday, October 28th, from 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. will be the grand opening of the Arlington Street Community Center, located at 36 Arlington Street. This project has been a collaborative effort from the conception. The community center board consists of city departments, including the library, public health, police, schools, and over a dozen nonprofit organizations, such as Boys and Girls Club, YMCA, United Way, the Youth Council, Lamprey Health, and the Adult Learning Center, to name just some of them. The center will have three large programming rooms, a computer lab, and shared office space. Furniture has been repurposed from the Nashua Library, and it has been donated from the YMCA. A number of repairs and upgrades to the building have been performed, and I want to thank the Building Department, the Risk Division here in City Hall, and especially Jay Honeywell, who you all know, who has assisted managing the improvements. Other city departments have assisted as well, including IT, the Department of Public Works, Parking, Parks and Rec. And this has been a citywide effort, and we look forward to a ribbon cutting followed by a Halloween celebration, which includes activities for the entire family. Monday, October 30th, at 9:00 a.m. will be the first volunteer information session. The center is designed and structured to be a place where the community gathers to support the education of our youth and families, and a place through which our young people are connected to learning experiences across our community. On the city website is a page dedicated to the center, including a calendar of programming, which includes programs such as a preschool program offered by the Y, teen leadership programs offered by the Boys and Girls Club, reading and STEAM activities offered by the Public Library, parenting and childhood development support offered by Lamprey Health, and workshops by Public Health, among many others. I encourage you to check out the calendar, and hopefully to join us. Hopefully Alderman Karen will be there, in her ward, on Saturday for the opening celebration. The Friends of MBK have already raised $4,700 of private funds for the support of the center and have provided a check for the trust fund that you all created. Next, Mr. President, I wanted to just recognize how many volunteers we have on tonight's agenda. We have people who have volunteered, been appointed and confirmed for the BIDA, for the Citizens Advisory Commission for Community Grants, for the Cultural Connections Committee, for the Nashville Airport Authority, for the Planning Board, and then some appointments you made, Mr. President, to those same organizations. I want to thank, and I'm sure the whole board thanks, every single person who has volunteered, some of whom are here tonight and who will be sworn in, for your dedication to our community and to your willingness to volunteer to serve the board or commission that you've been nominated and confirmed for. So, thank you very much. Finally, Mr. President, I have on your desk an ordinance which I'm going to ask, which is O-1746, which I'm going to be asked that you simply accept under a suspension of rules for a first reading and assign to the appropriate committee. What it does is it requires that any person who receives a contribution for the purpose of bringing and prosecuting a lawsuit challenging any action of the Board of Aldermen or the validity of any national ordinance or the charter, to file a statement of the names and amounts of the contributors that have been solicited, successfully solicited, for pursuing the case. Please note that the last sentence under paragraph A says that interveners supporting or opposing the city's position shall also be subject to the same requirements. So, the point here is that if someone brings a case that raises a matter of public concern, a public issue such as is defined in the ordinance, that the public have a right to know the source of the funds that are being raised to support that cause. Also, if an intervenor, which can happen, enters on behalf of the city, and they raise money, they also would have to disclose. This is a measure that requires accountability, it supports the public's right to know, and it is an open government proposal. Now, in terms of history, we have acted before to expand the disclosure requirements under the law. For example, two years ago, one of the candidates running filed an exploratory committee, and that was something that had not been contemplated, was not considered in the disclosure law. And we speedily pass an ordinance, an amendment, requiring that, for the first time, that exploratory committee make disclosures. I believe that if you look back further in history, you will find that initially, the ordinance only covered campaign contributions for those seeking office, but after, there had been some ballot questions where people raised money, the ordinance was expanded to include ballot questions. So, given some of the developments that have occurred recently, I think it is in the public's interest that we now create a similar disclosure requirement with respect to lawsuits that pursue actions that the public is highly interested in. So, I would ask that nothing tonight, other than you simply accept the ordinance under a suspension for referral to a committee and handle it in the normal fashion. And that's all I have, Mr. President.
Any responses to the remarks of the mayor? Alderman Lizzie Golia?
Yes. I have a question for the mayor, if I may, through you. But before that, I would just like to join the mayor in thanking all of the individuals who are here and those who are unable to attend, who are volunteering to serve on our boards and commissions. As I looked over this list, there were familiar names and new names, and it's nice to see other people participating. So, thank you to everyone who's here. They often leave before we get to offer them. Thanks. I have one question for you, Mayor Donches, and it's in reference to R-123, the Nashua Rail Committee that was established. I may have missed something, but have the members been named to that committee?
I don't think, no, they have not. I have not named mine, although I believe they, as the ordinance was drafted, they don't require the confirmation by the Board of Aldermen, but maybe the city attorney can...
Well, if I may, I don't believe they do either. I was just asked, and I said I haven't heard anything or seen anything, and I know all of the committee members are not coming from the board. I believe the chamber has a representative, and there are other community groups that are represented. So, I was just checking to see if that group had been formed, if the members had been named, and in looking at the legislation, they have 120 days to do their work. Are we anticipating extending that? Where are we with that? And these questions have all come up because of our recent move forward with rail.
Given our recent move forward, I think we should, you know, we should extend the deadline, and maybe there shouldn't be one. So, I think, as I understand it, if we are correct, that Aldermanic confirmation is not required, I simply will send a memo to the Board of Aldermen, but I can tell you that my intention is to appoint Dan Kelly, who's here as my representative, and to appoint Betty Lasky and Carl Seidel.
Okay.
So, as soon as we get to it, I will send you a memo to that effect.
Okay, thank you. And I just think there are people in the public who are interested because of both things happening. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Any further responses to the remarks of the mayor? Recognition period?
There is none.
Reading the minutes of previous meetings. Alderman Willshear.
I move that the minutes of the Board of Alderman meetings of October 10th, 2017 be accepted, placed on file, and the reading suspended.
Motion is that the minutes of the Board of Alderman meetings of October 10th, 2017 be accepted, placed on file, and that the readings be suspended. Is there any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion carries. Communications, Alderman Siegel?
I'd like to make a motion that the rules be so far suspended as to allow for the reading of a communication by title only that was received after the agenda was prepared.
Motion is that the rules be so far suspended as to allow for the reading of a communication by title only that was received after the agenda was prepared. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion carries.
Communication from Mayor Jim Donches regarding communication, NAMI, New Hampshire, Connect Suicide Prevention Project. I'd like to make a motion to accept, place, and file, and award the two-year contract to NAMI, New Hampshire, in an amount not to exceed $22,580.
Motion is to accept and place on file a communication and to award the two-year contract to NAMI, New Hampshire, in an amount not to exceed $22,580. Is there any discussion of that motion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Period for public comment relative to items expected to be acted upon this evening. There is one signature, Jill Longvall.
Hi, thank you for having me this evening, and I just wanted to let you know that I'm here if you have any questions regarding...
Can you give your name and address for the record first, please?
Sure, my name is Jill Longvall. I'm the Senior Environmental Planner at the Nashville Regional Planning Commission. Do you want the address for the planning commission? Nine Executive Park Drive, Merrimack. And I'm happy to answer any questions you have when we get to that point in the agenda.
Petitions?
There are none.
Nominations, appointments, and elections?
There are none.
Reports of committees, if there are no objections, the report of the Finance Committee of October 4th, 2017, will be accepted and placed on file. If there are no objections, the report of the Committee on Infrastructure of October 11th, 2017, will be accepted and placed on file. If there are no objections, the report of the Personnel and Administrative Affairs Committee of October 16th, 2017, will be accepted and placed on file. And if there are no objections, the report of the Planning and Economic Development Committee of October 17th, 2017, will be accepted and placed on file. Written reports from liaisons?
There are none.
Confirmation of the mayor's appointments?
Business and Industrial Development Authority.
Alderman Siegel?
Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to confirm by voice vote the appointment of the following individuals to Business and Industrial Development Authority. Deborah Novotny, 65 McKenna Drive, Nashua, for a term to expire September 30th, 2018; and Carl Andre, 10 Clydesdale Circle, Nashua, for a term to expire September 13th, 2019.
Motion is to confirm by voice vote the appointment of the following individuals to the Business and Industrial Development Authority. Deborah Novotny, 65 McKenna Drive, Nashua, for a term to expire September 30th, 2018; and Carl Andre, 10 Clydesdale Circle, Nashua, for a term to expire September 13th, 2019. Is there any discussion of that motion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, and Deborah Novotny and Carl Andre are appointed to the Business and Industrial Development Authority for terms to expire September 30th, 2018, and September 13th, 2019, respectively. Are either of those individuals here, they will be sworn in at a later date.
Citizens Advisory Commission for Community Grants.
Alderman Karen?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to make a motion to confirm by voice vote the appointment of the following individuals to the Citizens Advisory Commission for Community Grants. Beth Quam Toddham, 14 Alice Drive, Nashua, for a term to expire October 1st, 2018. Patricia Casey, 15 Pine Hill Ave., Nashua. And Jason Tellersky, 5 Shakespeare Road, Nashua, for terms to expire October 1st, 2019. And Michael Affleberg, 7 Edison Street, Nashua, for a term to expire October 1st, 2020.
Motion is to confirm by voice vote the appointment of the following individuals to the Citizens Advisory Commission for Community Grants. Beth Quam Toddham, 14 Alice Drive, Nashua, for a term to expire October 1st, 2018. Patricia Casey, 15 Pine Hill Avenue, Nashua. And Jason Tellersky, 5 Shakespeare Road, Nashua, for terms to expire October 1st, 2019. And Michael Affleberg, 7 Edison Street, Nashua, for a term to expire October 1st, 2020. Is there any discussion of that motion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion carries, and Beth Quam Toddham, Patricia Casey, Jason Tellersky, and Michael Affleberg are appointed to the Citizens Advisory Committee for Community Grants for the aforementioned terms. Whoever of those appointees are here, would you please come forward for the oath of office?
I give the great direction. You solemnly swear that you will faithfully and heartily discharge and perform all the duties and suffer upon you as a member of the Citizens Advisory Commission for Community Grants, according to the best of your abilities and agreeably to the rules and regulations of the City Charter and the Constitution laws of the State of New Hampshire, so help you God. Thank you.
Cultural Connections Committee.
Alderman Lopez?
I'd like to make a motion to confirm by voice vote the appointment of Dominique Buthod, 91 Bartimus Trail, Nashua, to the Cultural Connections Committee for term to expire September 30th, 2020.
Motion is to confirm by voice vote the appointment of Dominique Buthod, 91 Bartimus Trail, Nashua, to the Cultural Connections Committee for a term to expire September 30th, 2020. Is there any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, and Dominique Buthod is appointed to the Cultural Connections Committee for a term to expire September 30th, 2020. Would you please come forward for the oath?
I solemnly swear that you will faithfully and heartily discharge and perform all the duties and suffer upon you as a member of the Cultural Connections Committee, according to the best of your abilities and agreeably to the rules and regulations of the City Charter and the Constitution laws of the State of New Hampshire, so help you God.
Nashville Airport Authority.
Alderman LeBrun?
Thank you, Mr. President. I motioned to confirm by voice vote the appointment of Sandra Cushing Adams, 5 Scarborough Drive, Nashua, and Farrell T. Woods, 162 Bush Hill Road, Hudson, to the National Airport Authority for terms to expire August 31st, 2018, and August 31st, 2022, respectively.
Motion is to confirm by voice vote the appointment of Sandra Cushing Adams, 5 Scarborough Drive, Nashua, and Farrell T. Woods, 162 Bush Hill Road, Hudson, to the Nashville Airport Authority for terms to expire August 31st, 2018, and August 31st, 2022, respectively. Is there any discussion? Alderman Shoneman?
Thank you, Mr. President. I was unable to attend the PAA meeting when these appointments were heard. I just wanted to say that I'm very glad these two folks have decided to step up again. I think the Airport Authority is doing a very good job over there, and they're really doing an outstanding job, these two and the other three, so I want to thank them at this time for their service. Thanks.
Further discussion? Alderman Siegel?
I just want to remark that it's probably a lot easier for Sandy this time around. She's done a great job.
I was not going to point that out. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion carries. I don't see Ms. Adams, but Mr. Woods, would you come forward?
[inaudible] I solemnly swear that you will faithfully and heartily discharge and perform all the duties and suffer upon you as a member of the Nashville Airport Authority, according to the best of your abilities and agreeably to the rules and regulations of the City Charter and the Constitution laws of the State of New Hampshire, so help you God.
Planning Board.
Alderman Clemmons?
Thank you. I move to confirm by voice vote the following individuals to the Nashville City Planning Board for terms to expire March 31st, 2020. Alternate Maggie Harper, 3 Taft Street, Nashua, and Daniel Kelly, 9 Lilac Court, Nashua.
Motion is to confirm by voice vote the following individuals to the Nashville City Planning Board for terms to expire March 31st, 2020. Alternate Maggie Harper, 3 Taft Street, Nashua, and Daniel Kelly, 9 Lilac Court, Nashua. Is there any discussion of that motion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, and Maggie Harper and Daniel Kelly are appointed to the Nashville City Planning Board for terms to expire March 30th, 2020. Would those individuals come forward, please?
I solemnly swear that you will faithfully and heartily discharge and perform all the duties and suffer upon you as a member of the Nashville Planning Board, according to the best of your abilities and agreeably to the rules and regulations of the City Charter and the Constitution laws of the State of New Hampshire, so help you God.
Confirmation of the president of the Board of Alderman appointments?
Citizens Advisory Commission for Community Grants.
Alderman Karen?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to confirm by voice vote the appointment of the following individuals to the Citizens Advisory Commission for Community Grants. Michael Joseph, 184 Main Street, Nashua, for a term to expire October 1st, 2018, and Jennifer Bishop Saucier, 359B Main Street, Nashua, for a term to expire October 1st, 2020.
Motion is to confirm by voice vote the appointment of the following individuals to the Citizens Advisory Commission for Community Grants. Michael Joseph, 184 Main Street, Nashua, for a term to expire October 1st, 2018. Jennifer Bishop Saucier, 359B Main Street, Nashua, for a term to expire October 1st, 2020. Is there any discussion of that motion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, and Michael Joseph and Jennifer Bishop Saucier are appointed to the Citizen Advisory Commission for Community Grants for terms to expire October 1st, 2018, and October 1st, 2020. And if those individuals are here, would you please come forward?
[inaudible] I solemnly swear that you will faithfully and heartily discharge and perform all the duties and suffer upon you as a member of the Nashville Advisory Commission for Community Grants, according to the best of your abilities and agreeably to the rules and regulations of the City Charter and the Constitution laws of the State of New Hampshire, so help you God.
Unfinished business resolutions?
Second reading of Resolution 17-128, authorizing the mayor to enter into the cooperative agreement for household hazardous waste collection within the Nashua, New Hampshire region.
Alderwoman Lizzie Golia?
Yes, I would move for final passage of R-17128.
Motion is for final passage of R-17128. Is there any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, and R-17128 is adopted.
Second reading of Resolution 17-136, authorizing the city to enter into a short-term real property lease agreement for 44 Broad Street.
Alderman Dowd?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion for final passage of R-17136.
Motion is for final passage of R-17136. Is there any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, and R-17136 is duly adopted.
Excuse me.
Alderman Moriarty?
Sorry, it just is entertaining, I was reading the rent. I don't know if you guys read what the company's paying for rent. They're paying in trees. It's a Christmas tree farm that's renting space that used to be the old Dairy Queen, and Dairy Queen's not there anymore, so they need to sell the trees, Christmas trees, and they're renting from the city, and the rental fee is trees.
Unfinished business ordinances?
Second reading of Ordinance 17-039, amending the zoning map by expanding the historic overlay district by adding Greeley Park.
Alderman Shoneman?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to make a motion to amend O-17039 in its entirety by replacing it with the amended copy provided with the agenda, the goldenrod copy. I'd be happy to speak on that.
Motion is to amend O-1739 in its entirety by replacing it with the amended copy provided with the agenda. Alderman Shoneman, you want to explain the amendment?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Essentially, what we're doing here is we're clarifying the role of the Historic District Commission. It's an advisory role, according to this, and it just says that if something comes up that would pertain to, that would involve a project that would come under the normal auspices, or normal scrutiny, I guess, of the Historic District Commission. The Historic District Commission will be consulted on that project. It's a non-binding, it's just an advisory role. That's the amendment.
Any further comments on the motion to amend? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Alderman Shoneman?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to make a motion for final passage of O-17039 as amended, and if I may speak on that.
Motion is for final passage of O-1739 as amended. Alderman Shoneman?
Thank you very much, Mr. President. The idea behind this is to take advantage of one of these volunteer boards that we have in the city, that's Historic District Commission. We appoint folks to this commission who have an expertise, a perceived expertise, in city history, and a sense of aesthetics, and a desire to preserve assets in the city for the revitalization of the city with time. The idea here is to give them an advisory role, ask them their opinion, call on the expertise that we've already appointed them based upon, and I would encourage all of us to please support that. I think it's good for Nashua. Thank you.
Alderman Willshear?